We'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is April 12, 2022. It is 6:35 and we are in the council chambers of West Valley City Hall. All members are in the building. We're just waiting for one. Oh, yeah, he left. Never mind. So council member Norfelt is excused and council member Hoon is on Zoom. We will now turn the time over to council member Christiansen for our opening ceremony.
You know, I try to make these a little bit different each time. We will do the pledge of allegiance at the end, but think of a few things that have happened to you over the years and the beauty we have of living in the country that we do. On this day in history, in 1633, even before I was born, Galileo was accused of heresy. Think of everything we've got from Galileo. In 1861, on this day, the Civil War began with the firing on Fort Sumter. In 1929, this one's kind of local. They developed or established a national park down in Moab called Arches. In 1985, Senator Jake Garner took his face trip. We have a lot of history that's happened to each of us in our time here and where have the privilege of living in a country that has gone through a lot of change, has gone through a lot of advancement. And think of that as we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Please stand and follow me. Thank you, and I agree with the mayor from last week. We used to say that every day in school. I miss it.
Thank you. We'll now move to the minutes of April 5, 2022. Do we have any discussion or emotion on the minutes?
Move to approve those minutes, mayor. Second?
Thank you. You have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and those pass. We will now start or hold our public comment period. Comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Any person wishing to speak must keep their minute or their time to five minutes and may only speak once. After being recognized by the mayor, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address, unless you've provided it on this paper, and then just give us your name. Please address the mayor with your comments. It is your time to comment and not debate with the council. Council and staff will have time to respond to your comments within the 30-minute timeframe. We do have two other public hearings, so if you're here for either one of those, you can just wait and then speak when we open those. So our first speaker is welcome to come up now.
I had to think. I almost said, "Good morning, mayor." Good evening, mayor and council. I was watching county council as I do on Tuesday afternoons.
Your name? Name?
Oh, Jim V. Sock, sorry. Jim V. Sock, 5491 West Lockwood Drive, West Valley City.
Thank you.
Sorry. And they were talking a lot about water, water usage commitments. The county has committed not to turn on their parks, sprinklers and stuff until at least May 15. If we get another storm, they're going to even delay that. I'm hoping West Valley will follow that. I know I've sat in all the water meetings and heard the numbers. Even if the county reduces their number, the residents were to cut it in half. It's only about a 13% to 14% savings. That'd be cutting it in half if we all did that. But everybody keeps putting the burden on the cities, counties, government and residents to do all the cutting. I just think there needs to be more information out there. Like I said, if we cut it all back, it's approximately 14%. I'm rounding up the numbers that we would save if we did a 50% reduction. We've had several grand openings in the last three months. The number one thing that these business owners, franchisees and everyone says is our economic development team is so easy to work with. They love working with them. They know them by name. The process that they're put through is so much easier than our surrounding cities. We just had a car wash opening yesterday. They're opening up two more in West Valley City because right on the borders, because it was easier to deal with West Valley City than some of the other municipalities. I said that right. I think that is great for West Valley City and our, I believe there's two employees that are on that. That they're top of the line and the people like them. And so I wanted to give them a shout out. I had a resident reach out to me about code enforcement. Positive thing, though. And so I said, "I have to bring it in." The resident didn't want their name, so I will be vague. But this code enforcement employee treated them like a person, heard their situation, found out that my hometown was involved and was going to help them out and is working with them. This is a big change over three years ago. It seems, you know, it's usually negative, negative, negative. And so I've asked for the code enforcement employee's name. That resident's going to get it to me and then I will acknowledge him. Because if they're doing good stuff, we need to hear about that too instead of the negative stuff that normally comes before. That's all I have.
Thank you. Speaker two?
Okay, just two things. Wanted to get back on what Don said about the, what we used to do in, oh, sorry, Mike Markham.
Thank you.
3008 Allen Circle. Sheena. Don brought up what we used to do in school and I agree it'd be great to do that. But you know what else I'd like to see in the schools? If you have no say, and I voiced it to the school people, is have the teachers dress like the professionals they wanted to be treated like rather than like the students. You go to some of the schools and you can't tell the difference from the teachers to the students because they all dress terrible. And that's coming from a guy that's in the clothing business. So, but also I guess I have to eat a little crow. Some of the people in the back there left last week before I threw my temper tantrum and apologized for throwing my temper tantrum about what was reported to me as one trailer at $100,000. Well, Wayne was kind enough to call me the next day, take me over to the shops and show me it was not one trailer. It was multiple trailers for that price and they are the heaviest duty trailers for a dump trailer I've ever seen. That's a bumper pole. So hopefully the, my hometown people won't destroy them. We can get a couple of years out of them because they're expensive. But if they're going to be hauling concrete and dropping stuff in with backhoes and running into them with backhoes, I hope we can get some use out of them, but I apologize for my temper tantrum last week. So, sorry.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Okay, was there anyone that didn't have a chance to sign up that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period and turn the time over. Mr. Pyle, did you have, wish to make any comments?
No, ma'am. Thanks. I'm good.
Thank you. I'll turn it to the council. Or is anyone that would wish to make a comment? Seeing none, we will, all good.
I'm slow on the.
Okay.
Just one thing. I had a neighbor who just about got hit on a crosswalk on 41st and 8th Court. And said, "This is not the, an isolated incident." And I'll probably be the first one to get a ticket down 41. But if we can have the police officers maybe take a look at that and see how that's being enforced, that crosswalk. I think during school hours, that's probably more obvious, but there is a crosswalk there that, not during school hours, that we still need to observe and I'll make sure I do a better job of noticing that also, but if we can have something, someone to look at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll conclude that and we'll move on to our public hearings. We have application GPZ 2-2022. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle to explain that.
Thank you, ma'am. So this public hearing is to take public input for a proposed and applied for general plan change from mixed-use and large-lot residential, which would be two to three units an acre, to a small residential, four to seven units an acre, along with a zone change from A or agricultural to RS, which is residential sustainability. This application uses the PUD or planned unit development aspect of the ordinance to make that application. And probably the, one of the most pertinent parts of the application or the consideration and proposal is that it would comply with the residential sustainability zone standards, which have been passed for some time. The address of the proposed projects at 5143 West, 3500 South and comprises 5.9 acres. And I know what the number is. I've forgotten. Oh, it's 36 units now. The original proposal was for 38.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the council before we start the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing for your comments on this issue. If there, is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Come to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Mike Edmonds, 5046 Kiowa Way. My concern with it is I understand that there's been talk about opening up Kiowa to 3500 South, which I don't know if it's going to be proposed or if it's actually going in. But the road wasn't ever really set up to handle that. It's about eight feet narrower than all the other roads that are in the neighborhood. And I think it would impact things very negatively, especially with Mountain View Corridor, with the cars coming down, cutting through there. Because there's quite a bit to go through. You know, as far as the houses go, I think we all want them, but just concerned about that road. If it's going to cut into Kiowa on a through street where anybody can come through. So, and I think that's everything. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Name and address when you get here. Thank you.
Sheila Nichols, 5096 Kiowa Way. And I agree with Mike. We don't really want it opened up. We, I know they keep saying we won't get a lot more traffic, but we get a lot of cars who come down in there who get lost. And so we will have a lot more traffic. Not saying we wouldn't use it. If it were open, Kiowa would use it, I'm sure. But we're just, we've not been used to it. We don't want it. And we were given a plan in the last meeting we attended, which had a gate across there, which wasn't really my idea of a good, of a good thing either. But to open it up, I know some are saying that we won't accept them into the neighborhood or they won't feel accepted into the neighborhood if there's not a road that brings them in. But I don't see that as a problem because I really don't think we will ostracize them. I probably didn't say that right. Or ignore them. They'll be neighbors and we do want homes in there. We do want something like that built down there for, you know, to bring in people into the area. And I'm just not sure if we were told one thing and now they've changed it without, I don't know if they went back to the planning commission and we weren't told about it and changed it or if they can just change it. And that's another thing I'd like to know. Can they just change it on the fly without letting anybody know? And, you know, it's our neighborhood and we like it. And there are people that don't live on our street who also would like it not opened up. It's been nice. It is, it is hard sometimes to get out of there, but it's a nice street without a lot of extra traffic. And I'm afraid the extra traffic, they'll bring a lot of extra traffic in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Dale Inkley, 5083 Kiowa. So I'm neighbors with Mike and Sheila. And that's what I want to understand is the process. Because the recommendation from planning, the planning commission was to have a gate and, you know, preventing that traffic. And I was, I didn't realize there was a planning, a planning meeting this afternoon. I was listening to that on the way over here. And so my understanding was the recommendation from the planning commission was to have a gate. Is that still the case? Has something changed? I just want to understand how that works and what the process will be going forward to properly evaluate this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Chris Clifford. I'm the applicant.
Address, please.
2715 East Swanson Way in Holiday, Utah. Is this the appropriate time to discuss some of the issues? I weighed in on the study session last Tuesday. And after that meeting, there were several things that came out that were of concern. When we tried to address those in reference to some of the comments that the neighbors had made with the, with the modification that we provided you yesterday. The concern that you had was the integration of these two communities and also to provide access, which, which we did. We are still open to the idea of a gate. But we're sort of between a rock and a hard place here because the way the streets ordinance presently exist, it provides for a private street. But the city council will be considering removing public streets or private streets in favor of public streets. We can't have a gate on a, on a public street. And that's somewhat problematic. So, but that would usually come up in a, in a planning subdivision application. But here we are in simply a zone change. So I'd like to discuss briefly really what the scope and intent of the application is all about. I know we had to provide some detail as it relates to a concept of how this might look in context of the general plan amendment that we're seeking and the zone change, which would provide us the opportunity. In reference to what the application is considering, we considered the provisions of the general plan in the Section 7, which calls for a more balanced mix of single-family homes, lot sizes, values, promoting higher-value homes. I think we've met that concept by providing within the RS zone, a higher level of home product. We're, by way of development agreement, working with the development standards that have been applied at a much higher level than you would find in virtually any subdivision in this city. It also suggests that we need to provide, that the city should consider some flexibility on lot sizes for smaller infill parcels. That's a direct quote from the, from the general plan. This is an infill parcel. And all of the, all the, the concepts that we utilize here are based on, on this concept in particular. How infill properties work in the city. This is the unique piece. It's highly irregular in shape. And, and which, which of course would suggest that we need to have some flexibility in terms of how this subdivision lays out. And so going further into the general plan, it suggests that consideration be provided as incentives for doing this kind of subdivision under the RS designation, where density bonuses are provided. I know there's been some discussion about how dense this property is relative to its application. I'd like to also remind the council that the president zoning for the northern portion of this property is, is mixed-use, which would allow for a much higher density. And when applied in bonus with the southern section of the, of the property in question, that would in fact be roughly equivalent to what we are proposing in our project for 36 units. Again, again, the question of density comes up, I think, frequently in any rezon. No one wants to upzone a property from R18 or whatever the designation is for 8,000 lots to half-acre lots. That, that just doesn't make economic sense, given the, the value of land in the city. The cost of pads or building units per acre is, is of serious consideration. We, so when we're looking at the value of, of what we're proposing here, we're offering a unique opportunity within the bonus designation that we've been seeking here to provide a lower-cost basis of land value per, per unit. And our, our primary focus is to provide those kinds of opportunities that would not necessarily be available in other locations in the city. The, the bonus value is simply a way of providing lower-cost housing alternatives. Notwithstanding the fact that, that we're looking at a, providing a good value, we're also developing homes that I would argue are considerably higher value, concept values in terms of product finish. We're, we're being asked to provide exterior finishes that would not be demanded of other projects. The interior finishes as well with granite and hard-surface countertops, soft closed cabinet drawers. I mean, a host of other things that we've provided in the development agreement, which is under consideration. The final thing is that as it relates to what that value brings is a substantial improvement in terms of property values in the area. I think that's an important consideration when we look at what we're bringing to the table. We're not building townhomes here. We're building single-family homes for families and empty nesters and seniors that would be integrated into the community. And the product that we're providing is about $100,000 more than what the assessed property values are in the neighborhoods. And that would bring the property values up in the neighborhood. One last consideration, and I would just, you know, suggest something that needs to be considered as it relates to the maintenance of the, of the property. I know there's been a lot of discussion about what homeowners association obligations are. In this case, now with the revised plan, we do have a public street and the center of that street, of course, would be developed to a city standard. There was some question that was raised in the earlier work session as it relates to the little driveways or the alleys that, that, that connect the homes. Those would be private. But all of the metering would be in the public road and then all the laterals would be brought in from the public road. So there would really be virtually, other than surface maintenance of those little alleys, everything else would be under consideration as it relates to the public works obligation. So the concern about maintenance and maintaining services is really kind of a non-starter based on the, on the new plan that we have. I would, I would welcome questions if you had any for me as it relates to what you think we could do better to provide better product or better layout or, or maybe, maybe I'm just missing the point in terms of the application. The question today is whether or not this property should be rezoned that would allow for the development of this type. The functionality, the mechanics of all that would be, of course, part and parcel to the planning process in a subdivision application. Does our project meet the considerations of the rezon application? Is the fundamental question. And do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So I will comment on the change from the Coliseum to the straight-through road was a public street issue that the council had, not the planning commission. So that's why it was changed when it came to us. When we spoke about it last week in planning commission, there was more of a consensus that would be more comfortable with it being a public road just because public roads are handled differently than public or private. Sorry, city council. So we had concerns about private-public. And our problem, my specific issue with private streets is they're not always inspected to the level of a public street. The utilities in the ground, when it's a PUD, is a responsibility of the homeowners. And then fire, having the issue getting down there on street parking. As a council, we've seen so many issues from private streets. And that's why our concern was to change these over to public streets just to take away that extra burden for the residents that are going to be here. From my personal standpoint, their residential sustainability, the homes they're going to build, the standards they'll be held to with energy savings are pretty phenomenal and very good. I think they've done a very good job designing those, but it is the public-private street issue. And that's why we wanted to hook it in with the net subdivision to the east is to And that's why we wanted to hook it in with the net subdivision to the east is to keep that uniformity of the streets. For my personal view and kind of what I took from the other council members, but I'll let them chime in.
Also on that connection, uh instead of a cul-de-sac that helps with snow removal and street sweeping, um garbage collection, all of that is alleviated by connecting those those streets. So um it, I think it's a better, if if it is approved, um that would be the best case, I think. To have those connect.
Okay, with that said, was there anyone else that would like to address this issue on the public hearing? All right, we will close the public hearing and I will turn it to the council. We are first action item is ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen, which is to amend the general plan to show a change, a use change from multi-use to the large of and large lot to the small lot in the RE zone eventually. RS. We have too many ours. Anyway, turn it to the council for any comments, concerns, motion.
If I, if I going off of memory, um the RE zone.
Yeah, sorry, it's RS.
I know, but our RE zone was meant for larger parcels to create more of an estate type subdivision. And so that's my feeling is is that parcels that are over four or five acres should be zoned RE unless they're as my predecessor would say often, unless they're special. And uh so um, while this is a great project, I don't know if it rises to the level of special for me.
It looks like uh council member who on Zoom has a question.
Yes, I I have a comment and then I have a motion for this. To be honest, with you, the layout is a great uh look is beautiful. I like the layout. But the information the mayor just brought up a second ago and also we had in uh study meeting, I think it's a concern in me. Private and public street. Uh, I prefer to have a public street from north to south and from east west. So the future house owners will not bear enormous of money uh in the future when they move in. I represent. But I saw my that my comment that um motion is I deny to uh my motion, I deny ordinance twenty-two dash ten.
Okay, we have a motion of a motion for denial. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic, would you call the roll call?
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Before we do that, can I ask questions still?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Um, can I get confirmation on the uh difference in the width of the street uh from the existing Kiowa Way into the proposed forty-one foot road? Is that correct that there's a discrepancy there?
I hope Steve knows that answer. He might not, just because that's not something that would have been examination necessarily of the application. But I'll ask Steve and if he does know the width differences there, uh he can give you that information.
So it, so the question of the existing pavement width on Kiowa?
Yeah.
If it's twenty-six feet. And what's proposed on the the forty-one foot right away would also be twenty-six feet.
Okay, so that includes that. And then just to clarify for those in the audience, because that question's also raised, uh this motion is being made on the revised concept um with the through street, not the cul-de-sac version or the fence version.
I think that's how the motion was. Tom, were you making the motion with the updated plan with the public street instead of the private street?
Uh, yeah, I would love to have the uh public street from north to south, from east to west, all streets.
Okay, so his clarification is he wants all the streets to be public, so that's why he's voting for denial. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So was there any other questions before we call for a roll call?
Does the the concept plan is is not really tied to the zoning change. It's just a concept plan to give us an idea of what they're thinking of doing. What we're either approving or denying is zoning change and that's it. It's not the concept plan. So regardless of which concept plan we we think they're going to do, it doesn't matter. We're we're either approving or denying this zoning change and then they can go through the process of designing, final design. Is that right?
Yes.
Correct. And this first action is on the general plan change only, just to change the general plan. And then our next one will be the zoning actual. Okay, all good. All right, we'll turn it over to Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hume. Councilman Christiansen. And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
So then we go through the process. So our next one is for the zone change on the same property, which is ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen.
If we don't change the general plan, then there is no need for a zone change. So I would vote to deny that one also.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume. Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
And then we have resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two. The same item. And this is the development agreement, which if we don't do the others.
We're gonna have a development agreement.
That's correct. Still need a motion.
Motion deny twenty-two dash sixty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All right, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hume. Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Maryling.
Yes.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to our next public hearing was, which is application Z T two dash twenty-two. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Pyle for explanation.
Thank you, ma'am. So this public hearing would take public input for a considered zone ordinance, zoning ordinance text change that would add artificial turf standards to our development standards as well as amend other landscaping standards. So I'll try to describe what those would be. As I mentioned, the artificial turf uh would be included with under standards in particular places and manners for availability as installation as part of landscape installation during new construction and or remodeling. There also are changes proposed in the ordinance that would amend how the amount of required live plant material as it's calculated for front yards of single unit dwellings. And then there is also a irrigation controller uh change for commercial and multifamily residential developments, uh which would be to a water sense labeled smart irrigation controller. Um, and obviously there, the idea is to help once again with the landscape standards as they currently exist and as are being updated to deal with water conservation measures. The summary I gave you isn't necessarily exhaustive of the changes, but gives you an idea of uh what the changes to the ordinance is entail.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the council before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. And if you would like to come up, we can name an address. Seeing no one. Oh, there we go. Can't waste a good public hearing.
Mike Markham, um just one thing I wanted to add is within that, does it cover if a person uses rocks, the size of the rocks, they can't use gravel, it has to be landscape material, has to be landscape rocks. Because we have too many people that believe gravel is landscape materials, they can park on it, they can do whatever they want with it. So we need to specify the size of rock that people can landscape with. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Off the top of your head, do you have an answer to that one?
I don't believe the changes address that. There are standards and Rockscape is allowed. Um, what exactly the the size of rock standard is currently, I don't know. Steve would have to speak to that. We have had discussions at the staff level that conceptually, we actually kind of agree with that. It would be better to have larger diameter rock in these uh just from a sheer maintenance standpoint, doesn't get spread around, doesn't get uh messy. I'll just put it that way. But Steve would uh need to speak to whatever the current and or I don't think there's any changes, but if there are any, he could tell you what they were.
Mr. Pastor.
Thank you. So currently there is no standard for the size of gravel and and this ordinance does not address it.
Okay. So that would be a future agenda item if we chose to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for your comment. Seeing no other comments, we will now close the public hearing. And our action item will be ordinance twenty-two dash fifteen, and I will turn it to the council for discussion or emotion.
Pretty sure I already know the answer to this, but in the previous part of me um meeting, there was discussion about uh one of the universities doing a study about um how hot the turf and things can get. I just wanted to clarify. I feel like I already know that this is the case, but because it's on people's private property, they install it, they're responsible. There's no kind of uh liability or anything that comes back to us just because we allow those kind of materials, correct?
No, not that I've ever heard of. And I would also, I guess, off the top of my head, also reminds me that there are a lot of other surfaces that would count like rock or concrete that would have the same effect anyway. So
Perfect.
I've never heard of anything like that.
I would move to approve ordinance twenty-two dash dash fifteen.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll turn the time over to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Hi.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to our resolutions. We have resolution twenty-two dash sixty-three. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution kind of goes along with the same uh topic and effort that the council's enacting with the previous ordinance in that we're trying to find ways to conserve water and um also partner with our water purveyors. In this case, it would be Granger Hunter Water Improvement District and Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And so therefore, we have uh pursued a lot of different water conservation solutions over the years. We've negotiated recently with uh Jordan Valley. And they also have a concern for our welfare and the fact that their rate structures are affected by different entities and by our partnering with them in this that will preserve our ability to obtain new water supplies and not an elevated rate structure, at least under this uh circumstance. There could be other, obviously, ways that uh water rates go up. But in this particular case, we would be protecting ourselves from that by adopting this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we actually have three water suppliers districts that supply to us, Magna, Kearns and
Yep.
Granger Hunter. So this will affect all of those. So I will turn this over to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty-two sixty-three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hume. Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We now have resolution twenty-two dash sixty-four. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would award a construction contract to Paulson Construction for the West Valley City Justice Court's renovation project here at City Hall in the amount of five million, four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and some change. There were four bidders on this project. Paulson was the second lowest by some forty thousand dollars or something like that. I can't remember. Uh Cal Wadsworth Construction was the other bidder that withdrew their proposal due to some time constraints. They asked for our assistance on that. And I will say we've worked with Paulson in the past, been very happy with their works, would be glad to have them on.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn the time over to the council for a motion or discussion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash six-four. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Turn the time over to Ms. Kamic for a roll call vote.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume. Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we'll now turn the time to resolution twenty-two dash sixty-five. Mr. Pyle.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. This is the award of a construction contract for Rocky Ridge Park, which will cost nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and some change. It's located at fifty-two fifty South Summer Ridge Drive is one point four four acres of land. And we had five bidders. Van Con, no, I'm sorry, Stratton and Bratt. I apologize to Stratton and Bratt if they're listening, was the lowest responsible bidder. So we're proposing to award the contract to them.
All right, thank you. Hey, any discussion or motion from the council?
Motion to approve twenty-two sixty-five. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty, Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hume. Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Well, now move to motion or resolution twenty-two dash sixty-six.
Thank you, ma'am. This is another construction project for uh the twenty-twenty-two pedestrian ramp project. And would be awarded to Acme Construction in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty uh dollars. We are seeking authorization for up to three hundred thousand dollars in case there are any change orders. Minor change orders. If there were significant change orders, they'd be over that amount and we'd be back.
Okay, thank you. Turn it to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Pyle, just a question on that.
Yes.
You know, the word, the previous bids, and I'd imagine in this environment, costs are always going up. What happens in those cases where we didn't approve um up to a certain amount?
Oh, we just came back for consideration and and we would then give you and like a, that's, that's why I mentioned a minor versus a major um contract change or change order. If it's a minor change, really all we're trying to do is save a step. If it's a major change, we'd be back anyway. So that could entail anything from subsurface soil conditions we didn't know about or found some contaminated soil or something like that. As opposed to this, where in that twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars difference, you might have some slight design change that added a few square feet of uh concrete or change the radius of an intersection or something like that.
Okay, thanks. A motion to approve resolution twenty-two sixty dash sixty-six.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Hi.
And Maryling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolution twenty-two dash sixty-seven and we'll turn the time to Mr. Pyle.
Thanks, ma'am. It must be construction season. These are all construction projects. This one is for an agreement with the Zio Group, who are a potential contractor or subcontractor on the forty-seven hundred South Reconstruction Project. They would be burying overhead communication lines between forty-eight hundred west and fifty-six hundred west in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, which would be paid out of the transportation bond funds, which are part of the overall forty-seven hundred south project.
Thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion. I'll now turn it to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve twenty two sixty seven. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fatisamani.
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune. Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
And Mary Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do have need of a closed session for legal pending litigation. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll need a motion for that. We will convene in a closed session and then we will reconvene in this just to close the meeting and no other action will be taken. So can we get a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second and we will go into a closed session. Thank you so much.